Welcome to our May 29th special meeting of the Manati County School Board. I want to officially call this meeting to order. If you guys will rise with me and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Alright, first item up is approval of the agenda. We did have some agenda amendments adding some of the contract language. The board material for the personnel files as well was added. So those were our agenda or our amendments. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Sorry.
I'm moved.
Second. Alright, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of this morning's agenda. Ah, my voting works too.
Yay!
Passes five to zero. Back in the game. Alright, um, public comment is next and no public comment, correct?
Correct.
Alright, so moving forward to we'll go new business with, this is a superintendent recommendation, so Mr. Chapman.
Yes. I recommend the approval of the appointments, changes of assignments, promotions, reappointments, reassignments, resignations, retirements, suspensions, termination, transfers, essentially a lot of HR work. I recommend the approval of that work.
So moved.
I'll second.
She had motion as second. Before leaving this, I will say, a lot of retirements going on and I just, I want to specifically, one of my favorite teachers growing up and she dealt with, you know, a lot for me probably as a fourth grader. But Ms. Sales, Ms. Thomas at Stewart Elementary, 36 years, went to her party last night. She has taught, she went to school with my mom and dad, you know, throughout high school and things and then taught myself, my sister, my brother, my nephew, and probably all of my good friends and close friends that I've had since elementary school. So congratulations to her and 36 years is a long time, but barely beat by Mr. Don French. And if anybody knows French, he was, yeah, he was my assistant principal at, when I first started teaching at Brayden River. Learned a lot from him, learned how to, how to jump in and be a part of kids' lives at the school level. So want to thank him for his service 40 years. I know he's not done till actually till August and I told him I'm going to embarrass him further, but we got a little something we've been planning. But I want to say congratulations to everybody retiring. Lot of long tenured people that'll be tough to replace and thankful for their service. Alright, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the appointments, change of assignments, promotions, reappointments, reassignments, resignations, retirements. And that passes five to zero. Item number two, this is us board, no superintendent recommendation. This is us, Mr. Dai, myself and Mr. Chapman have worked on this superintendent supplemental contract for Mr. Chapman. Everybody has been given it, I think even had a chance to talk to you, Mr. Dai. Is there, well, I guess I'll ask for a motion in a second before we start any discussion.
So moved.
I'll second.
So you had a motion as second. Mr. Dai, do you want to say anything about the contract or any board members line up to speak if you wish?
Yeah, let me just run through it, I think.
Okay.
Would be appropriate. So I sent the board two versions of the agreement. We've done these agreements in the past, as you can imagine. I got some advice from Dr. Vogel of what's going on in the state. The form's pretty simple. I'm sure everybody read it and it was pretty easy to understand. It's kind of a miniature contract like a full superintendent engagement contract, but just less, more simplistic because it's for, you know, it's for a limited period of time. The, I think the board has to decide how long to make the term. And I put in the first draft through, after we talked about it, the chair and I, September 5th, the, I mean, you can put whatever number you want. The reason for that was not to end it on September 1, which is a holiday. The, I think we had that happen once and it was...
We did, we had to have like an interim.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a good idea.
It's weird, yeah.
The, so we just did the 5th. It terminates automatically on the appointment of a new full-time superintendent. And it states that, so there was an initial discussion with Mr. Chapman and you can weigh in and insert, about wanting, him wanting to return to employment after the being interim superintendent as associate superintendent, which would be a promotion. But the more I looked into that, I felt that was really the job, the duty of the new superintendent to do with, you know, and it would get approved by the board, but it's, but he's, he would like for that to happen. But I took that out of the final version because I just, I just don't think it fits the legal organization of school boards who hire the superintendent by statute and then the superintendent determines their cabinet, so to speak, and then the board approves it. So I really think that's what should be followed. But now you know, Mr. Chapman would like to have that, especially after serving as superintendent for, and having those skills. So anyway, so I took that out of the, out of the draft. The salary after, after researching what's going on in the state, talking to Dr. Vogel, looking at the most recent, I think most recent one being the transfer of the superintendent from Naples interim basis to Alachua, which was at 19,500 a month. The practice in the state for interims is to basically supplement their salary to what the superintendent was getting. The 19-5 is right there in this case. If you, if you look at Dr. Weisong where his salary began and then also you look at what's being, what was done just recently in Alachua, it's right there. So the 19-5 is what I put in your first draft. I left, all of this the board of course has to approve. So in addition to that, the majority of benefits that you put in a full-time superintendent contract were, are not included in one of these interim contracts. But it does include vehicle allowance, which I suggested $600 a month. Dr. Weisong's was 650, which he negotiated. The cellphone provided by the school board, you know, electronic device is pretty standard. The, Mr. Chapman's already getting many of these benefits as an employee. They just continue, you know, retirement system, health insurance. There is expense account, same expense account Dr. Weisong had, $400 a month for paying expenses related to the position. And that's about it. So happy to answer any questions if...
Yeah, we do have someone with a question. Ms. Kearney?
Thank you. Pardon me. Attorney Dai, I'm in section three, sub B, one, two, and three. So in, I just want to make sure this was the intention. In number three, sick days, it says, Mr. Chapman will accrue sick days at the same rate as any other district administrators, so on and so forth. That, it looks like that applies to number two above it, personal days. And then it's, I'm not as clear on number one, because the way that I'm reading number one, vacation days, upon execution of this contract, the school board will provide 25 vacation days for the year. Is that also 25 days prorated?
Right.
Yes, it would be.
Okay. It just, it wasn't, because in number three, it's very clear and that's what I was after, but it just read to me that, okay, once we execute this, he's going to get 25 vacation days added.
It's prorated.
Prorated, okay. Just want to...
Mr. Chapman, that was your understanding as well?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Kearney.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, Chad, if I may, one more. Just, I just want to make sure, under number six, indemnification, that provides protection to Mr. Chapman for any legal stuff arising out of the performance of his job duties and the board would be responsible for defending him?
Which, which?
Page four.
Indemnification.
Section six, indemnification.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you. That's it.
Ms. Ray?
That's very similar to just what's in a superintendent contract.
Standard.
Okay. Yep. Just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Ms. Ray?
Okay. A couple of things. On number six, page number two, number six for the cellphone. This is a temporary rule. I don't know if we need to go through the process of getting him a cellphone. I think we could probably compensate him for what he's paying for his cell service instead of doing a phone, buying a phone, giving him the phone. I mean, he's using his phone now. I don't, I don't know if he has a district-appointed phone or not.
I do not.
Okay. So I don't know if just for this two or two and a half month period, if we shouldn't just maybe pay a cellphone bill.
I'm, I mean, I'm fine with that. I think Alachua gave like 175 bucks to theirs, the ones we were looking at. I mean, I'm okay with giving money to help with cellphone.
Like 150, I don't know what a cellphone bill is, but...
I mean, I would say probably very similar to what Alachua's doing. 175 is probably what they're, what they're looking at as a standard. I'd be fine with doing that instead of having to deal with a...
Right.
Another phone.
Right, buying a phone.
Everyone has his number already.
Right. I think that would probably be a better compromise than to, than to us purchasing a whole nother phone.
So I mean, I mean, are you guys okay with that? I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Ms. Felton?
Yeah.
You're okay with that?
You're the board, yeah, nothing.
Okay, alright. And the vehicle allowance, I'm good with the 600 because, yeah, the other superintendent negotiated higher than what we was typically giving a former superintendent, so I'm okay with that. My thing is salary, number eight. And I had a conversation with Mr. Chapman on the first draft. I just felt that, I just felt that's a little rich for me. And that's the term I use for him too. This is a very short-term contract. The former superintendent had a doctorate and I understand that Mr. Chapman has a lot of leadership experience and I have great expectations for, from him in the next couple of months or so. I just, I have a problem with the 19-5. I don't know if anybody else does. If I'm the only one, that's fine too. But I don't know what else to recommend there.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, let me take that down. No, Mrs. Ray, I just wanted to provide, I don't want to say pushback because that's too strong a word, but just kind of my view on that.
Right. That's all I want is everybody else's opinion.
Yeah, there is, I agree that Dr. Weisong had a doctorate degree and there's, and there's a difference in there academically or academic performance history. But I think the equalizer is, Mr. Chapman has been here for many years and he does bring a benefit to us as interim and beyond. Because he knows everybody involved in the district, in the community. And so that to me is kind of an equalizer.
Okay.
And so I support the 19-5 because as Attorney Dai said, it's kind of our current market.
Current market.
Market value, so to speak.
Okay.
And so, you know, and like I said, that experience difference is what makes up that difference to me, just my, just my take.
Okay. Ms. Felton?
I also agree with, with Mr. Kennedy with the 19-5.
I just didn't know if I'm the only one that thought, wow, I was in sticker shop when I saw that.
Yeah, with the institutional knowledge he has and the experience already working in the district, I think it's worth it.
Okay.
Do you have any comment?
I'm just kind of neutral. It's about halfway between, if you look at the salary range that we're asking for the new superintendent, it's about right in the middle, right? It's what, 175 to, 195 to 270, it's right in the middle. You know, I guess we could save $5,000 or something by knocking it down to 18-5, but just do a good job, don't screw it up, alright?
I'll dock, I'll dock. That's what they used to say, I'll dock, yeah.
Not a motion.
I remember that he not screw it up.
Chair, I want to clarify, are we going to stay with the September 5th?
Yeah, so that was, I was going to go, jump back to that. I agree with others, I think 19-5 is prudent. He's been making the same decisions and doing everything that the prior superintendent did. So as far as date goes, as long as, I'm okay with September 5, as long as you believe that in this, with what we have here, in the language we have here currently, are we able to increase it whenever we want to whatever many days we want, right? And I'm going to get into some of the, the search and what some of these firms have said to me as I've asked them for help. And that may help this, talk about the decision of having a date of September 5th. But I'm okay with leaving it September 5th unless we can't easily push this back to, let's say, August 1st or something to that effect if, if we needed to several months from now.
I would recommend, if you, if you believe it'd be wise to put a little more time in it, to go ahead and do that now and go ahead and discuss why you think that.
Okay.
Rather than go back and amend it.
Sure, sure. Okay. For me personally, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I would say, I think from, from, from discussions with some of the search firms on the timeline that we were all discussing last workshop, basically prior to school starting in August, having a superintendent, most of the firms have come back and said that's a very aggressive timeline, right? Not that it can't be done, but that it's an aggressive timeline. And their preference would be to add more time to that, to allow more time to be had for that. They said, look, this is, this is up to you all, it's y'all's decision on how you want to move forward. But that was pretty much the, the, from, for most of them, that was the discussion of the timeline. So that's why this date comes, comes up. I would, I would say if it's easier to just go ahead and do it now and in the language, we obviously say it stops whenever we hire a new superintendent.
You can automatically, it automatically shortens, but it doesn't automatically extend.
Correct. So I would say then, I would say we, if we can amend that to, and I'm just throwing this number out here to cover us for as long as we possibly could. But I would just throw this out there till like December 24th or 23rd or whatever the break is, and maybe I'm going too far.
Oh.
But I'm saying, I'm saying that, I'm not saying he's going to have that contract. I'm saying if in fact we go through this search and we find somebody and someone says, and we fall in love with somebody, like this is our next superintendent, and then they say, well, I gotta be here till December, or I gotta be here till, I gotta give 30 days, 60 days in my contract to my, to my place of employment, we've got to be able to be flexible with that, right? If we found the right person that's not here. I'm not saying that's going to happen, we have no clue. But, but I don't, if Mr. Dai is saying it's easier for us to extend this right now, an interim supplemental contract, it's easy to, to shorten it because it says in the language, once you find a superintendent, it's over. If it's easy for us to shorten it rather than extending it, I would say let's just have it extended out, worst-case scenario as far out as we possibly can.
Exactly, yeah.
And then once we hire, we'll shorten it up. If that is, I don't, that makes sense.
It does.
So I mean, I don't know if that's what you're kind of thinking about too, after obviously our discussion and I know you had discussion with one of the consultants as well.
Yeah, it, so the goal is to do it much sooner than that.
Sure.
But it automatically ends when you, when you hire a new superintendent. So to put it a little extra, I mean, doesn't mean you're going that whole distance.
Right.
So it's easier, you wouldn't have to have a meeting to modify it.
Why do we have to have a date at all? That would be my question. Why do you need to serve as interim superintendent until the board, omit that date spot until the board installs the superintendent?
I would, I would go to attorneys, I mean, if you guys are okay with that.
I just don't think we need to have a drop-dead date in here. No, not no literal date, but you know what I mean? I just don't think we need to have a date, end date.
Well, it, it's really because an employment contract really needs a term. It, it needs a start and a finish.
Okay.
You can modify that later, but to just leave it completely open-ended, I think, would be, create a scenario of legal interpretation if you, if things didn't go well. I mean, it looks like an expectation could be, this could go on a very long time. So it's better to bracket it, even though you can always change it later. But, but employment contracts almost always have a, have a end date.
Ms. Felton?
So I'm, I support the idea of having an end date. I feel like also it gives the public a better view of, you know, that we are, we are actually planning an end date, that we are going to hire somebody, we're working expeditiously to do this, and that we're not just going to kind of drift around and take our time. So I think that having an end date in there at least shows the public that we are, we anticipate that by this time, we will have someone. And, and I also agree with like November, December as well, just in case. Whatever somebody's, as you said, whatever somebody's, you know, timeframe is, if they have to stay somewhere, give certain amount of notice, then we're covered and it will save us time from having to come back and amend later.
I think that's awful long, no?
I, I don't think, I don't think that it's going to be till December. Like I don't, I don't think that, I think we're going to find somebody, I think it's going to go well. I'm not, I'm not anticipating it lasting. I do believe we can find somebody this summer and, and then have it at the start of the school year, potentially. But it could be a 30-day thing, right? You find somebody mid to late July and they're like, hey, I need 30 days, I can't start August 10th. I think that's the start of the new year, August 10th next year.
For kids, yeah.
So I think it's easier just to have it pushed. And I, I would say, hey, we could do it like November 1, but again, what if something were to happen, then we got to come back here and say, hey, let's extend it another 30 days and we can just do it now? I do not anticipate it being that long though. I, I don't. So maybe December's not the right time, maybe it's really if it's, if it's like when we come back to school in January, it's more like what, the 5th or 6th? I think it's the 5th or 6th.
Okay.
And so I don't, again, I don't anticipate it going that way, it's just covering us in case it does. It doesn't hurt us to extend it however long we want. It's just, we don't have to come back and do this again.
Well, it, it also, it's an interim contract. It's not intended to go on forever. And it, and it does, another point could, you could say, it forces it back into the board at a date certain, if you reach this time limit and you haven't done anything, you to have a permanent, so it forces it back to the board. So if you're a minority vote on what's going on in the future, you at least it comes back to the board. Let's say you don't like the situation and it's December, but you're a minority, it at least comes back to the board. You know what I mean? Has, has to be dealt with. You may get voted out, you may not win again, but, so it, it forces it back to the board if a decision hasn't been made by December. So that's another reason to have an end date on it.
And December doesn't have to be the date, I'm just, it could be November 1, it could be whatever we want. Go ahead, Ms. Ray.
I don't know what, we just got this thing from FSBA.
That's, that's their...
Right. I just know what we went through to, for the former search and we didn't do that, we didn't take six, eight months to go through that.
Oh yeah, I agree.
Process. That's why I'm like, why are we thinking about, now we're up to January?
No, no, we're not. Hold on, let me, let me go back and reiterate. I'm not saying the process is going to take that long. I'm saying, when we did the process last time, we were doing it through the end of the year, right? And we were doing it to start July 1, start date. And so these, these, as we were interviewing, the top three superintendents who came to our final vote, their districts knew they were doing this May, so they knew that it potentially could be picked. If we do this in July and you have, you have a superintendent somewhere else, a deputy superintendent, whoever that we possibly look into, they may say, look, my contract says I can't leave, a new start of a new school year. year, which is July 1, right? Fiscal year. I can't leave for 30 days, 60 days, semester, whatever. I don't know. I'm just, I've, I've no clue, right? I don't, I don't know if our contracts have that with some of our deputies. I don't even know that language. I don't think they do. But I don't know how their places operate. So I just want us to have a, instead of having to go back in April or in August and say, hey, we had an August or September 5th date, so and so can't come till November 1, because they got to wait 60 days or whatever. Now we've got to amend this contract, and we can't just do it now. And not have to have that other meeting to amend it. I do not anticipate it going, I don't anticipate the search going through to December. I don't anticipate necessarily having someone be December, but I'm just covering the what ifs. What if we find somebody that says, hey, I can't, can't come till X amount of days. This at least covers us. But if you all as a board are okay with coming back in a meeting and having to amend it because something were to come up, that's fine too. I don't think there's a right or a wrong way. I just think if we extend it out, it covers us. So we don't have to come back up and do this like we would anyways, right? We would of course say, yeah, of course we're going to extend it another 60 days to have so and so come in who we just went through a process and hired. So if we're going to do that in two months from now, why don't we just do it now?
I'd rather get it done now.
So, I mean, and, and if a date is, a date can be whatever we want. I, I'm, I'm just throwing out the first semester because I don't know what that contract may be. I don't anticipate that happening, but you never know. So I'm just trying to get it covered. Now, so, I mean, we have September 5th. If, if, is there a motion to amend to say, did you pick?
There's no date on that. There's no date on here, so we don't really need a motion to amend this contract because it doesn't have the date inserted. That was the first draft he sent out.
That's right.
This is a blank now. We're, we're filling in the date.
Gotcha.
In January, um, students, I mean, sorry, teachers return on the 2nd, students return on the 6th.
So it would be January 2nd, then, that we would say, this person would start? Because that's the start of the semester for staff. Okay?
So the new person would start January 2nd?
No, no, no. I'm saying, only if they couldn't leave their other spot. We could find someone that can start August 1st. I don't know. I would love to. I'd love to find someone that can start August right away, or whenever we get done with our process. I'm saying that Mr. Chapman, if we, if the next superintendent has to stay through a semester or whatever, we have the ability to say, look, leave, leave Mr. Chapman as an interim and not have to come back to this contract and amend it. It's already set a date now. I do not think it's going to take that long. I do not think we're going to have that issue, but it's just a safety net to say, we don't have to come back and amend this again. Because I'd rather not amend contracts over and over and over again.
Yeah, I get what you're saying. I just think that when we talked about this at the special board meeting, we said it would be a very quick process, and even talked about how scaled down, we didn't need to do all of that.
Oh, I, I had that, I had the timeline ready for that. I, and it's going to be scaled
Okay, okay, alright.
We'll, we'll talk about that in the next, in the next section.
Alright.
I do have what we discussed. I do think we're going to be able to have interviews by, by mid-July. I do think we're going to have a decision by the timeframe, but again, I don't, I don't know if that decision is going to be someone that says, hey, I want this job, we want this person, but hey, I can't leave my district till November 1.
Okay.
Right? And then we got to decide that at that point, do we like this person that much that we want to wait till November, or do we not, right? And we'll make that decision. Um, but then if he, if that is the case, it allows us to continue with our interim throughout that process. That's the only reason why, to have this, is just in case there's a new superintendent. But our timeline, what I'll discuss here in the next section, is the same as what we've, what we discussed, unless we want to change it as a board. We can discuss that.
Well, even, even at that...
But this has nothing to do with the timeline.
Alright, you, okay. Even at that, even on this section 1, um, I mean, the date until whatever date this new one comes in, um, I would even kind of almost add and retain as the associate superintendent during a transition period as well. Know what I'm saying? From the interim to help transition the new superintendent.
To return to employment with the district in his current position. You're saying at the end of that, instead of saying current position, say?
Act as a associate superintendent during a transitional period.
And then you're going to put dates in there?
I, I don't want to put the date because I don't know what that date is. During a transitional period for up to four weeks.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, like, like...
Yeah, we could do that, maybe.
A week period, yeah, not...
Right.
Maybe dates.
Right.
Well, that is kind of his role as a chief. He's going to go back to being, what is your official duty title? What was your official duty title?
Uh, Executive Director, uh, of Administration.
Chief of Staff.
Yeah, that's the honor.
Layman's.
And that's kind of your, you're an advisor, you're in an advisory role anyway.
Yeah, I'm, I'm one of the, one of five direct reports to the superintendent.
So I mean, that, he's, he'll effectively, when he goes back to his position, be, be an advisor to the superintendent. Do you want him to be an associate for, for a particular reason? I mean, is there a?
No, I was just trying to make sure that there was a transitional, a handoff.
Sure.
Period.
I think he'll work, I mean, you're not going to take vacation for two months, are you, Mr. Chapman?
We're in a different, we're in a different...
I'm not trying to be facetious.
No, no, no. We're in a different kind of thing. This time, before, we had, the former superintendent had retired.
Right.
Okay.
But Dr. Wyson did have time with her.
Right.
Several weeks before he actually started.
It was limited because he, because Dr. Wyson was working. So it was very limited. I know he came down and did things. I do know that. Uh, but yeah, okay. I just wanted to throw that out there as well, you know, because I'm like, okay. By the time we select somebody, put them in, I didn't want to just say, okay, we're done with you. Go back to your old job now. I wanted to have at least that grace period for transitional. So, that's all.
That's a good idea. I, I think, but, but he'll essentially be in that role. Like, if he was moving maybe to another building or to something that wasn't directly reporting to the superintendent, I, I would be more inclined to go along with you. But he'll be right there. I mean, his office will be right next to the new superintendent. So I, I think he'll still be in an advisory role there. He won't be off doing something else. He'll, he'll still be able to help the new guy as a transition.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think he's going to go anywhere.
Is that, what are your thoughts on that? Ms. Bray? He'll still, he'll be right there. He'll still be...
Right, but when he goes back to his, uh, district, to his, return to employment with his district current position, so once the new superintendent hears, then he's automatically going to go back to his original position, and the pay increase will be cut.
Yeah, he'll go back to his normal salary.
Right. So, okay. I was just trying to figure out a way to transition him back financially as well. Not just, here you go. Thank you very much for helping us through this crisis, and now go back. That's kind of where I was going with that.
I understand.
So, okay.
Well, I think, again, that could be something the new superintendent can decide too, right?
Oh, I guess that's true too.
Maybe they, maybe the superintendent wants that, and maybe they decide that.
Okay. That's an option out there, I guess. Maybe I'll discuss one.
Um, on, on date wise, are we okay with giving ourselves some breathing room to, say, January 2nd, 2026?
Sure. Yes.
All intents and persons, we're not going to do that, but, and that's not the search time, that's just this employment contract.
Here's one other thought on that, is that, I mean, we're assuming that we are going to find somebody that we like. Maybe we don't. You know, maybe we, the candidates we get, we go, mm, and then we have to extend the search. You know, I would, I would rather be really sure about somebody than say, well, gee, we really want someone in the seat by the beginning of the school year, so, eh, this person looks okay, let's give them a shot. You know, I'd rather just keep Mr. Chapman in the seat till we find someone that we're all real comfortable. The point is, that will also give us some more time. If we run through the search one time and we don't get a, a really good candidate that we like, then this gives us some extra time to run the search again.
Agreed.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's another view I didn't consider, so.
Yeah, I didn't think about that either.
Right, right.
So, uh, Mr. Dye, January, January 2nd, 2026? What do you got, what do you guys?
What we're looking at, so January 2nd is a Friday.
Correct.
Um, is there, do we want to consider, when there's already a board meeting, is there a board meeting in the first week of January?
We haven't set 26.
We haven't set 26 yet.
We haven't set 26, we won't set that till November.
But I would assume, looking at the calendar, I would assume it's going to be the 15th or 13th?
13th.
The 13th and the 27th would be probably where, where it should land, 2nd and 4th? So you, you do all think that it should be to the 13th because that's a board vote, and that's also voting in the new superintendent? If, if that were to be the case. I don't think that's going to be the case, but...
I, I think you want to avoid the first week of January.
Okay.
Especially that first mini-week, the 1st and the 2nd.
Sure. So do you want to just move it to like Tuesday to 6th? And if we got to do a special meeting at that time for some weird reason, we can?
Yeah, I think that makes more sense.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's...
I mean, we, none of us think we're going to need this, but...
Correct.
Alright, we went from September to January now.
Let's at least pick a, a day that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. So just January 6th, 2026, we're good with that?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. Um, other than that, I think that was the only real discussion points of the, the cell phone addition, that date to be put in there. I think everything else is good. I don't see any other speakers lit up to speak.
I, I would recommend summarizing the changes that were made to the agreement.
Okay. So, from, from what was posted and what's here right now in front of me, changes are in paragraph, uh, label number one, employment. Um, we have put in a date of January 6th, 2026, or until the board installs another person to serve as either interim or as superintendent. Um, the salary in 3A is 19.5, 19,500. That was blanked in this. Um, moving down to number 5 under leave, vacation, uh, subsection B, number 5, for vehicle allowance, it's $600 per month. Uh, then number 6 just below that is...
I can, I can restate that.
Okay.
Okay. Paragraph 6, cellphone, the school board will reimburse Mr. Chapman for a cellular phone and such other electronic devices that are reasonably necessary for the execution. That should be of his duties. I corrected one version of this. Um, as superintendent, up to $175 per month.
Okay.
There you go.
75.
I'll give you a mark.
Um, and that was it. Everything, expense account was in there for 400. Everything else was in there in good, uh, indemnification, like Mr. Kennedy said is in there. So everything else discussed in there is good, other than those changes.
Correct.
Okay. Alright, um, alright, I think we're ready to vote on the motion to approve the contract with Mr. Chapman as interim superintendent. I don't see motion as second.
I'll move to approve the amended...
Oh, I thought we already had that.
Apparently it's not.
Yeah, maybe it didn't say.
So...
This is the amended one that all of your...
Perfect.
Okay, so I, I move to, uh, approve the interim superintendent contract as amended to include the things we've already discussed.
There you go.
Alright, so there's a motion, second.
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Bray. Now, Greenwich should be up and running to vote on that motion. Alright, and that passes 5 to 0. Alright, thank you, Board. Um, and thank you, Mr. Dye, Mr. Chapman, uh, as well. Alright, so, search. Um, first off, let me, let me, uh, and this is based off of, um, discussion with, with, uh, Mr. Chapman, um, and also from what we talked about last workshop about, um, the search and the timeline. So my thought is, um, and, and I, I meant to, to print this out, and I completely forgot. So if you go on your calendars, um, on like Outlook, um, you'll be able to see the dates on this. So my thinking is, we, um, post the position. We'll talk about the posting and that sort of thing from FSBA is what we just got. My thought process is on this, we post this on Monday, June 2nd, um, for a timeline. That, what's up on the screen is last, is last times. Um, but we post on June 2nd. We let that run until June 20th. So that'd be three weeks that, that this would be open for, for people to apply.
I'm trying to find what you're talking about, by the way.
I'm not. I don't, there's no document.
Oh, I thought you had a document.
This is just discussion.
Okay, I got it.
No, no. No document, just discussion on dates. That's why I'm saying if you, to get a visual on a calendar, you can look at your Outlook. I meant to put this in a, in a, in a Word document, um, and, and escape.
I have a paper calendar, it's easier.
So, June 2nd, which is next week, Monday, we would post. We'll put up on our website, and we'll talk about where to post and all that here in a second. So I just want to talk about timeline first.
Okay.
So June 2nd, we opened the posting up. Had that open for three weeks, so that runs till June 20th. Okay? So June 20th, no more applications, just like we did last time. As we get applications in from June 2nd to the 20th, we'll post them on the website. We'll get them, obviously, every couple of days, whatever. So we'll be able to be evaluating, looking at applicants before the 20th. After the 20th and it closes, the next board meeting is the 24th of June. There's also a workshop scheduled before that.
Okay.
So the thought would be, at that workshop on the 24th, to have our list of a top 3 to top 5 from all the applicants. Each board member comes in, here's our 3, here's our 5. We discuss who we want to bring in in the workshop on the 24th. We, if we need to vote on that on the 24th at the meeting to bring those in, I don't know if that needs to be an actual voting item, but if it does, we've got that meeting on the 24th to do that. So then at the 24th, we decide our top 3 to 5, you know, in that range. We can discuss that more, how many we want. The 25th, starting June 25th, through the 26th and 27th, we start calling them to schedule, right? Their interviews to come in and speak with us. The next week is July 4th. I would say we don't do anything on July 4th. I'm not asking someone to come in July 4th, right? So then my thought process would be July 7th through the 18th, in that two-week period, do the interviews for the candidates that we've selected on the June 24th. So July 7th through the 18th would be interviews.
Two weeks of interviews is what you think?
I'm, I'm just, I'm just giving us a, because...
A window.
A window. I'm not saying it's going to take two weeks. We could do them all in one day, I don't know. Uh, that's up to us, to, to, but I'm saying, that's the window because June 22nd is our next board meeting, where we would then have that meeting to say, we've done our interviews, we dealt with our top 3 to top 5, let's pick somebody. 22nd, we would pick somebody on that meeting on the 22nd. That would give a week and a half, almost two weeks till August 1st, August 4th, that week, to start right before school, and we go from there. So that was a, that was what we talked about, like of a, of a, a quick timeline, right? That's two months. That's this summer, right? So that timeline, I spoke with the consultants about. And I told them that timeline wasn't vote, or you know, approved or anything by us, but as we spoke about, we, you know, and we had a kind of agreement that we'd like someone here beginning of school. So when I was speaking with those, especially the last ones, well, I didn't get a hold of one of the last ones, didn't get back, but I got a new one. Um, and I'll tell you the three. So the three that were sent out, um, first off, FSBA, uh, Andrea Messina was, said yes, we would absolutely do it, but we cannot give you the date and the timeline you're looking for with the help because of their conference in, in June. So the, the only real way that, um, they could help is if we push everything back, which then pushes all that back, right? Um, second person was at HYA, who we had before, um, come out to us and, and given, uh, a proposal. That was sent to you by Ms. Cox, sent that out.
Yeah.
Uh, with the email, I think with the verbiage from the email that he sent to me. Did you send it with the, his verbiage or no? Perfect. So the verbiage that he sent was, hey, I'm gonna, we're gonna do the same pricing as we did before. They had broken it up into three, if you, if you look at, at HYA. Um, they, they had it into three different parts. Um, he did not believe that, um, trying to pull up where it is, fee proposal for HYA. So HYA, um, has an engagement, a recruitment, and a selection. So they had three different sections that were about thirteen thousand apiece. He said in the timeline, he did not believe engagement would be needed, since we, two years ago, we got engagement from the community, qualities are probably going to be the same, et cetera. So he would say he would eliminate the engagement, but everything else after that would follow. So bottom line, it was fifty-three, four, we would just subtract thirteen thousand three hundred from that, and that's about the price you're going to get for that, right? So about forty grand. That's HYA. Um, ZIL, which was sent, uh, a, a new one was sent this morning um, by ZIL.
There was a new one from them?
Uh, there was a new one in there, um, that ZIL, uh, I believe, Charlie, was it your sister? That met this guy? He said it was my sister, but I don't know if it was my sister or not.
I didn't realize that this is the gentleman my sister knew.
Yeah.
Um, because I don't think my sister ever told me his name.
So, so Jeff is obviously the, uh, the founder and CEO, but, um, if you scroll down a little bit more, um.
Oh, revised, red dot, revised?
Joel, I think Joel, Matt, maybe?
Revised, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the revised one.
Uh, it's not Jeff Melendez.
Oh, gotcha, okay, so, so board members, you had the revised one, though? That was sent out, yep, in the email. So that.
So the only thing that was revised was the.
The price of the timeline.
I can't, I don't see the, oh, there's the, okay.
You see the price? So, this, so Jeff, um, they have someone local here in, in Manatee County that does the, the, you know, west coast here. Um, that gentleman is, his name is Dr. Joe Mishler.
I'm going to it right now.
Yeah.
Um, is the Manatee County rep here. Um, they, um, obviously the packet's there. Their dates that they recommended, you can see, um, you know, it kind of starts doing some interviews with us in the next several days, come in and do some, some stuff with us about interviewing processes and things like that. Um, obviously around June 10th, he, he followed my dates that I gave him.
I see it.
So, you know, this, his, his recommended date, his format is what I was speaking with him about. So we obviously don't have to be exactly on these dates, but this is pretty darn close to what I just told you all about with, when picking somebody by July 22nd date. Fee is down there at the bottom, eighteen nine.
Yep.
So, um, another option, um, the, the, the one, like I said, didn't get back. The other option, um, I reached out to Dr. Vogel and said, hey, could, FSBA didn't feel like, from Andrea's standpoint, we could do all those things that we did before because of the, the, um.
Conference.
Conference. So I asked Dr. Vogel, would you be willing, like, to you yourself, just be hired by us, or something like that, to come in and help? His suggestion was, number one, he had some reservations about the timeline, he was one that had reservations, um, as well, about the timeline, about how quickly. Um, he said, an option could be, if it's something the board wants to do, um, that instead of hiring a consultant like this, that actually will come in and do some of this stuff that, that is being said in the ZIL and, and in the HYA, that, um, he would be willing to, if, if we wanted to go this way, of all applications, Mr. Die's office is the, is that third party that brings everything in, and then sends everything to us, right? Um, once it goes through the law firm and gets sent to us, we pick out the people who we want, uh, as finalists. Um, Mr. Die's firm can then hire, so it wouldn't be necessarily us hiring it, but Mr. Die's firm be hiring, uh, Dr. Vogel to come in and vet those folks. Um, you know, if we pick three, four, or five people, whatever that number is, wherever, whatever we get to. Um, obviously with his knowledge of, of around the state, the districts and things like that, he could come in, vet those, those individuals, make sure they're good, we have the, the, uh, company that would do the background check and things like that. Obviously, we're going to do that ourselves as well, um, but at least gives us somebody that, um, can go and vet some of these folks from a local, calling someone, calling their Troy Nelson and saying, hey, how's the file on XYZ, no scary stuff, no crazy stuff that we may not see until late, right? Um, it doesn't necessarily, going that route, going it with Mr. Die's office organizing things, doesn't give us someone that's going to stand here at the podium and lead us, like we had last time. So if that's something the board wants, we wouldn't go this direction. But I wanted to give all options that are out there on the table, um, for us to, to discuss. Um, and with that, um, let me ask you this. Did I explain everything clear enough? Do you guys kind of have it? And then obviously you have comments and questions we can all answer. I don't have any answers, right? I just have the information that I gave.
Mm-hmm.
We will have to come up with the answers, but hopefully I explained all that correctly, we have the numbers in front of us, um, and we can kind of go from there. So Ms. Felton, you were lit up, and then Ms. Spray.
Um, so with the HYA of about forty grand and ZIL at eighteen nine.
Yeah.
That's a big difference. Any, having not read through all of this in detail, because we're just getting it now, uh, do you have any indication as to why? This is my first question, as to why there's such a big difference between them?
No, they were the highest one last time, too.
They were the highest one last time, too.
Okay, and which one?
So they were high, so I, so I, I, I don't know, I think that's just their pricing.
Okay, and the one we used last time was?
FSBA.
It was FSBA last time, and of course, we just.
Now, and granted, last time, you know, this was like a, like a six to five, six-month process, right, five-month process.
Yeah.
So, um, and there was a lot more involvement, I think, from them than this time. Um, I'm not saying, if we went back to HYA, we could probably get cheaper, perhaps. I just said, hey, give me what you, here's what we're looking for, give me what you think. So I'm not saying they could go cheaper, but that, there is a big discrepancy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, this also brings me on to my next question. Um, if we bring our top three to five on the 24th workshop, do we need to? Is, is, this is for the attorneys, can, or can we just take that and then vote on that at the board meeting the same day? Do we not have to, like, notice anything for sunshine reasons?
It's got to be voted on, to be honest with you. Like voted on from an applicant list of twenty-five people, and we're getting down to three, does that have to be actually voted? I don't know if we voted on it.
Yes, I think you should vote on it.
Vote on it, okay.
Yeah, but, no, there's no special regulations. It's just a board action.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we don't need to, for sunshine, say, these are the one, you know, these are the twenty-five applicants we have, and we're going to vote on them.
Well, can I interject real quick, Mr. Die? So we will advertise on the workshop.
Mm-hmm.
That these are the names, obviously, we're going to have the names of all the applicants. We won't have the final three, but we can advertise those same names on the meeting advertisement to say there's going to be a vote on the top three to five out of these names, right? So, we can definitely make sure that the public sees all the names.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Now, now, the, on the, on that actual 24th meeting, there'll be more names than just the three or five, than everybody, but if they're, if they're watching the workshop, they'll see what we're going to dwindle it down to.
Okay, so then, next question. Um, if we do our interviews, the 7th through the 18th, in that window, obviously not those dates.
Sure.
Um, when, when will the public have time to weigh in, or is that going to be public comment on the 22nd? Because I'm sure some PDI will have an, a thought that they're going to want to share with us.
Sure. So, um, the way we did it before was in workshops, they, they were allowed to public comment, right? So we would have, I mean, we can, if you guys want to, we can have a workshop, just add a workshop into before the 22nd, so we're not discussing it at the meeting, like, let's discuss it at a workshop. Hey, we did our interviews, I'm just throwing this hypothetical out here, right? We get all our interviews done by the 17th of July, and we say, hey, let's have a workshop to decide who it is. And we're actually going to vote on it on the 22nd. On the 17th, they could be there, the interviews are going to be open to the public, so they're going to be able to sit on the interviews, right, and watch them, obviously watch on the screen. So we could do a workshop before the 22nd meeting, for us to talk about, here's our, the top three or five, here's who we think we, we would go with. And then come the 22nd meeting, put that na, person's name on there and actually vote on it.
I would prefer to do that, because that way, also it doesn't extend the meeting. If we have, like, you know, two people want this person, two people want the other person, and we're having this whole, you know.
We could actually do a workshop at some point.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would urge the board to go with a workshop as well, so that way we can, we can take the time to discuss and not have to worry about everything else that's on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I'm done.
Was that it? Uh, Ms. Spray?
Good thoughts. That's basically what I was writing down here, if we could do a workshop. I mean, we could have five to twenty-five applicants, that, and Ms. Felton, before, and to Mr. Kennedy, I think you followed it. Uh, last time, we advertised everybody's resumes.
I did follow.
On the website, so everyone knew who was applying.
Yeah.
Live, as they came in, it was updated. So anytime an applicant put it in, it went on the website.
We were getting feedback right away.
Right.
We could do that too, this, this time as well, where we get a feedback from public to a website, I think that's what we did last time, right?
Yes.
A website, I'm sorry, an email. SuperintendentSearch@ManTe schools.net. So if you're, you're in the public and you see, hey, it's XYZ person, you write that email and say, I love this person, I don't like this person, whatever, whatever, and then that's all forwarded to us.
That would be great, yeah.
And people, people were emailing their comments about their likes and dislikes about, about every candidate, and even when we got down to our last three, we were getting likes and dislikes. So, but I would say, yeah, if we could do the interview process between the 7th and 17th, is what I would say, and then do the workshop.
Sure.
On the final three, five, whatever, I would, I would recommend three, I think five's a lot. Um, that's my preference, but, um, only one vote up here. Um, and didn't we have a certain page just for the superintendent on the website last night?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we had a page that was on there with everything.
Right.
And we could do the same thing.
Right.
So Hanson's ready to.
And, and I do, and the other thing is, one, I am not a HYA fan with that price tag, so you can scrap that idea right now. Um, I.
I'll, I'll agree with you on that.
I'm just one of those brutally honest people sometimes. Um, I don't know, uh, the other, oh, that's the other one from, the ZEL, ZEL?
ZIL.
ZIL. ZIL. Okay, they, they went from a significant amount to a very modest amount.
Yeah, when he revised it down, the initial one he sent was before we spoke on the phone. It was just initially email blast out, and then when we spoke on the phone, I actually told him about our timeline of being what, what we just talked about.
Okay, I got it, that's why it came down so low, okay. Uh, I kind of like the idea of Dr. Vogel and going through, uh, with Mr. Die. Simply because Dr. Vogel was very involved with the last search. So I think he kind of knows the expectations, and we've given, since we extended the interim superintendent's contract up to, I think that that's going to give us time to really do the deep dive of this, and we should. Uh, I just don't know what kind of fee he's going to charge, I don't, we didn't get into that, I don't.
I did not, I did not ask and get into that, I don't, I mean, I, I don't know if you did, Mr. Die.
To me.
My assumption is not going to be what.
To me, I think that is the best option. Uh, I just believe that that's less cumbersome than having, you know, other people. Uh, and, I mean, we can put our attorney to work for us as well in this process, like he did before. And, uh, I spoke to him on, I think, every applicant before, which I'll do again. Um, so I would be more about Dr. Vogel assisting, he's been a part of FSBA for decades, former superintendent, he's got a lot of knowledge about that, so I think he would be a good option for us.
One thing I did forget to mention, and it's not in the revised feature um, from ZIL, but I think it is in the original one. They, um, and, and Mr. Menendez, the, the CEO, when we spoke, uh, reiterated this to, to me several times, um, that when they, when they do work with uh, a, a district to pick a superintendent, that they don't like to just stop when it's done, right? Like, their goal is to make sure that the next step, and I think we all want this, I, I know we do, because we, we've talked about it. We, the next step of, uh, training and getting involved with, with the superintendent and the, and the board, and really going through, I know we've got the FSBA stuff, but I think some other stuff is what we all kind of were, were talked about. Um, so, so they do provide that as well. Don't know, you know, I've never used them, don't know anything.
ZIL does?
ZIL does, so they provide the, after you hire, they provide that, that training, um, and, and, and stuff that, that we would, that we would probably like to do, so that could have been, um, part of that orig, original amount, if you kind of look at that. There is like transitional support to ensure smooth transition, twelve months of executive coaching for the new superintendent, my selected member of the ZIL. So there's a lot of stuff added, like, ZIL's full package, the original one, doesn't, like, that price tag is not just like, hey, when we're done, it's over. I mean, they're going to provide twelve months of executive coaching, half-day governance training retreat for the board, the new superintendent. So in that price, that original price, are all those extra things that are after, so just FYI on that. So I'm sure we could, if we wanted to later on, I'm sure we could go back to them and all-accart some of that stuff, right, if we wanted to, if we didn't want to use them. Um, I will say that for, for, as far as a preference on who to use, what to use, all those, those sorts of things, I think that, like, from an advertising standpoint, like, looking at the, at this from a process of, um, of the actual timeline, like, getting the, the, the post ready and posting it, I think we've got that covered. You guys see the qualifications and qualities that we used last time.
Alright.
Andrea said, you guys can use anything you want from what we did last time, it's not proprietary, you know, we're, you, we're your, your member, uh, you know, um, you know, you're a member of FSBA, so you can use whatever you need to. So we just took off FSBA's, you know, logo and put our own, right?
Right.
So we can post that, she also sent the actual, what the post looked like, I think Laura, um, Ms. Cox sent that out to everybody, what that post actually looks like, or did look like. I think it said, uh, School District, Manatee County, Florida Superintendent Search, and then it lists kind of stuff about us, we can obviously update that um, with the number of students and things. But I think all that kind of looks good, except for at the bottom, it says, obviously, contact names, right? So I think we get rid of that, and we fill in whoever we need to. So, I think from a starting the search, I don't think we need a consultant to start, to open this up and to start. I, I think we've got everything we need to do that. I think where the, where the cons, consultants come into play later on, and I think, Mr. Kennedy, you brought this up during the workshop, is the vetting in that process of at the end, I think is when it's important to have, I mean, our staff just can't do that, um, and do everything else, right? And we, I don't think we can do that. I think we can sit here together and discuss, uh, our top three to top five and dwindle that down. Um, we did that last time, it was pretty simple, it was just us, you know, they were just there standing in front of us, kind of walking it through, it, you know, it was, it was, uh, it was obviously us doing everything. So, um, I would be fine with doing it. So, um, I would be fine with doing it through Mr. Die's office. Obviously, everything's going to be put up public knowledge and everything, and then getting Vogel at the end. Come in and say, hey, can you help vet these, these folks, et cetera? Um, I'm open to, to Zeal, I, I think HYA, I agree with you, I think it's too expensive. Um, I'm open to Zeal as well. Um, I don't have a feeling to postpone this, though, to start later so that FSBA can give us their full attention, like they did before. I'm not, I think, I think we need to just go ahead and start.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, yeah, those are, those are my thoughts. Ms. Felton, you were led up again?
Um, I just wanted to, uh, verify or re, have you re, um, explain what Mr. Die's staff is going to be handling? Does it go through him? Because I, I'm just kind of caught some of that.
Dr. Vogel believed what happened is that the, the staff at, at the law firm would be where they, where applications were sent. So it wasn't coming through the district, it's a third-party outside source that's going. So that there's, there's a trail that shows X Y Z person sent their resume in to not only the firm, but also our address, et cetera. So there's a check and balance of like, so, so somebody in the public can't say, well, I know so-and-so applied.
And we didn't get, we didn't get their name, yeah.
Correct, yeah, right?
Got that.
So that there's, so there's a check and balance between what's being sent to, to everywhere and, and that, that sort of thing. And then, really, that's it, until hiring Dr. Vogel to come in, if that's what we want to do, to come in and vet everybody.
Alright, so his staff wouldn't have any other additional responsibilities with, okay, that's why I just wanted to.
Mr. Don, unless you, whatever, you know, you and Dr. Vogel spoke about this. Unless you have a different thought process.
No, it's really ministerial, the, a place outside the district where people would apply. So that'd be awkward to be sending it to the district, to the HR department or whoever. Um, and we would be compiling the information in a, in a format to be sent to the board. And also, uh, Dr. Vogel, if you go that route and hire him, he would, uh, he would be reviewing the applicants and vetting them so that he could, uh, give you his professional opinion of who he, he, thank, the strengths and weaknesses of different candidates. Um, but also has offered that, um, we could utilize the, uh, background check firm that FSBA uses. So he has those contacts and, and we would run that on everybody through our office.
Okay, and so, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, where you're.
And then, so then that would then, that information would then be all submitted to the board.
Okay, and so then Dr. Vogel gets it from you and, and everything goes through all of that.
So he would be your consultant.
Our consultant, okay. And do, have we talked money with him?
Not yet.
I, I, I don't, my assumption is.
My assumption.
It'll be the lowest one of all three options.
It's gonna be more, yeah.
It'll be lower than all three options.
He's gonna be doing it on the tail end of it.
But it won't be as much either, right? Like, like Zeal shows, hey, we're gonna do board interviews, we're gonna talk about this or about that or whatever, that we wouldn't be getting that level. So I don't, I don't, it's gonna be less than, I would imagine it's gonna be less than what the Zeal proposal is.
Okay, thank you.
Um, buts.
I like the Dr. Vogel option.
Okay.
Uh, thanks, I, um, am I showing up on your board?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refresh. Maybe you got.
No, that's okay, this will probably be my last comment on this anyway. Um, I'm just gonna ask everybody to take a look at your calendar, because I'm gonna suggest some slight tweaks
Okay.
to the proposed timeline, as presented by our chair a few minutes ago. Um, while you guys are doing, while you guys are opening your calendars, I just want to share a couple thoughts on what we did receive, like, the FSBA full proposal. Um, I really appreciated their kind of diverse channels through which we could advertise and recruit candidates, I thought that was the strength there.
Yeah.
Um, HYA, I thought their due diligence, um, was very well articulated and thorough, but, you know, reasons already stated, I agree. It's a little, it's a little above our, um, our budget. Um, and then I think the, the modified Zeal proposal is the most responsive. Um, I do have to admit, I had no idea when I read both those proposals that this was the gentleman that met my sister at a conference in Orlando, so I, I do have to say I had no idea. But, um, but anyway, um, back to the timeline. So, um, Mr. Chair, I think you proposed that we go from, we posted from six June second to June, uh, twentieth, yeah.
Twenty, right.
My suggestion is let's back that down two days to Wednesday, the eighteenth. And that way, that gives Mr. Die's team, if they're gonna be, or I'm sorry, not Mr. Die's team, that gives our, if it's gonna be Mr. Hanson and his team that are posting to the website. If we close on Wednesday, the eighteenth, that gives the IT team two full days to get all of the documentation up online on the website. So as of Fri- that Friday afternoon, we can say to the public, hey, if you have some time over the weekend, everything is in, start taking a look at our candidates.
I would say, so, just real quick, just to, um.
Sure.
Dialogue. My expectation to Mr. Hanson would be that they're uploading every time they get it, as they get it.
Okay.
So not to wait, like, one comes in on the eleventh, like, you're doing it, or at, at the end of the day, you know, at the end of your, at the end of, before five o'clock hits.
Whatever came in.
Yeah, three came in that day, you're uploading right away, so, but that doesn't mean we still can't push it back to maybe the nineteenth or whatever, so that way Friday is the actual last one, you know what I mean, if that's what you're wanting.
Isn't it a four-day week that, starting then? Are we on four-day weeks?
Yeah, we are.
We are.
So I want to make sure we keep that in mind, it's a four-day week.
So we, let's just move it to the nineteenth in general, so nineteenth instead of twentieth.
Right, right.
Nineteenth is good. Um, next up, um.
Uh, for Ju- June nineteenth would be the date we would close.
Can we put that like that?
Application process.
Can we put that like at noon?
Sure, we could say noon, we could put whatever.
Yeah, I would like, yeah, I think we should.
Noon on Friday, so that way gives it their staff.
Noon, because it's a four-day, they're working a four-day week, if we close it at noon, that gives staff a lo- enough time to get everything done by the end of the day.
Right, good point. And then we would have it for the whole weekend, Friday, Saturday.
Till noon, so.
Twelve PM on June nineteenth.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with that, too. Um, next on my timeline, um, Mr. Chair, I think you suggested at the, on June twenty-fourth, which is a Tuesday, I should open my own calendar. Um, um, you suggested at that meeting and workshop that we submit our, that we, the board members, submit our top three through five?
Yeah, we would discuss at the workshop, how we did it last time, was it a workshop?
Mm-hmm.
We came in and we could do it very similar to what they did, we had like a list of the names, and it was like, okay, you know, Board Member One or Board Member Choate, here's my three names, bub, 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 and then we sat here and discussed it, and you're like, oh, yeah, I've got so-and-so on my top three. Oh, we all do, they're through. You know, oh, there's only two board members that have this person?
Mm-hmm.
They're not through. Or maybe we discuss, because someone says, hey, they weren't in my top three, but they're in my four. So then we, we would discuss names like that, so that would happen at that workshop on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Which is it, it, which is in the morning, and, or, or we don't have a specific time yet, but the meeting that night is at five-thirty.
Is that still the same, uh, wait, 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 I'm sorry, didn't, may I, Mr.?
Yeah, go ahead, of course, of course.
Um, we're still on a four-day work week, that.
Correct.
So that workshop should be on Thursday, the seventeenth, not the eighteenth then?
No, 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 the, the workshop is on the twenty-fourth, we moved it to both June's workshops, the tenth and the twenty-fourth, to have it on the same day, because there were scheduling conflicts, uh, obviously, we're in FSBA, um, eleventh and twelfth. And, and of the twenty-sixth, there was something, there was something on the twenty-sixth.
MTC's graduation.
No, I'm talking about, I didn't.
That may be it.
Interject, but I'm saying, when we pick our three to five.
Yeah.
I thought that was gonna be a special workshop to do that.
That's what I'm about to get to.
Okay, okay.
You're, you're reading my mind.
Thank you.
Oh.
Yeah.
But I, but that's.
I thought, I thought this going to the special workshop in, was gonna be for the finals. The final three is what we were talking about in July, around the sixteenth or seventeenth, doing a workshop to talk about our actual final. So when we pick John Doe as our person, that it's on the twenty-second meeting.
Right.
It's just approving John Doe. So that's my special workshop, that's not scheduled, is what Ms. Felton brought up earlier, was to be somewhere on that July fourteenth through seventeenth week. Not anytime in June, because we already have the workshop in June that we can dwindle the initial list down to three to five. And then we'll have another workshop to actually pick the person, and then that will go on the July twenty-second meeting as approval of John Doe as superintendent. And we already did the picking of that on that July seventeenth or July sixteenth workshop, whatever we decide. Does that make sense?
No, no, because I'm back on June twenty-fourth, we have a workshop and a school board.
Correct.
Okay.
So that, that workshop and school board meeting, that workshop will be to determine the twenty applicants we get, or however many we get, dwindle it down to three to five, our finalists, at the workshop. And then at the board meeting, approve those three to five, vote them as they're our, they're our semifinalists. So my thought is, we don't need another workshop from the nineteenth at noon, when it gets, when we have, turn in, applications are turned in. When can we have another, why would we have another workshop when we're gonna have it on the twenty-fourth, to discuss?
This is where I'm confused, okay? You, I think you said that the application window, I'm sorry, I encroached on your time, Mr. Kennedy.
It's okay.
That you said that we were gonna open applications on Monday, June second.
Correct.
And they would be open until Thursday, June twentieth at noon.
June nineteenth.
June nineteenth at noon.
Correct.
Okay, and you're telling me that from, from the nineteenth of June to the twenty-fourth of June, we're gonna pick our top three to five.
That's where I'm going next.
Yeah, because there's, right over here, I'm saying, right, as board members, but over here in July, we just said the seventh through the eighteenth would be interviews, when, yeah, so go ahead, Mr. Kennedy.
Interviews of the three, the top three people.
All right.
That we picked on the twenty-fourth.
Top three, all right, top, go ahead, Mr. Kennedy.
So last time, and I only brought, I only did that because last time, well, last time we'd had, we did several different elimination periods.
Yeah.
We had the initial limit, we, initial, I think we had thirty-two applicants. Then we did, and then, then we all sat and said, okay, who's our top ten?
Right.
That we want to get videos from. I don't think that's necessary, to be honest with you, but that's fine. So we did that initial elimination period. Then we came back after those and said, okay, now we've got our top three, let's get it to three, to five, and we did three. And then we did the interviews of those three, personal, face-to-face.
Okay, I gotcha.
Then came back and had a workshop where we talked about it. And then I, actually, I think, if I remember correctly, I think we had a special meeting right after that workshop, just that one item, to approve it. Like, it was like bang, bang, we didn't wait for another business meeting, like, we did it all together, which we could if you guys wanted to. So that was our process, so that's why all I did was eliminate that first elimination of going to like ten. I just said, let's go straight to three to five. And we'll do that in the workshop, the first workshop after the nineteenth, is my thought. But, so, Mr. Kennedy, you, you have a different thought.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, just wanna make sure I got it right.
It's intertwined, pardon me. It's, it's just a one, it's not even an additional step, it's just a different way to look at it, and it meshes in with the timeline you've already suggested. So, Mr. Chair, you've suggested six-twenty-four, top three through five from each board member. Um, I'm a little concerned about that tight a timeframe between the closing and, um, and all of us having to come up with the top three to five. My suggestion would be, let's push that back one week to July first, we don't have anything scheduled on July one, it's a Tuesday. Um, plus, that additional week will give us time, I think it's compressed, but I think will give us, um, a week of really important public feedback, public and employee feedback, those that are, you know, engaged over the summer, I realize some people are gonna leave and, and check out until they have to be back, um, in August. Um, and by the way, I misspoke earlier, the first day for teacher, and first day for kids is, is August eleventh, which is a Monday, first day for teachers is August fourth. Um, so I just wanted to throw that in real quick. So my suggestion, again, is possible special meeting on Tuesday, July first. Um, and then, i- in the interest of maximizing public input, and then everything else falls in line right behind that on the schedule that you've already put forward. Interviews on July seventh to July eighteenth. And then we already have scheduled a meeting on the twenty-second, which, Chad, I think you suggested a possible hire on that date. We have July twenty-ninth, which is our statutorily required tentative budget, um, meeting and proposal to the public. I don't know if by law that has to be a single item meeting, um, a tentative budget meeting that we're required to hold per statute. Must that be a one-item meeting or?
I thought it is.
I, I had that feeling, too.
I think it has to be a one-item.
I think it has to be just that.
Okay. And then obviously, we have a, we have a, um, um, we have a board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, August fifth as well. Um, granted, that's teacher's second day of work, that, that day, but we could, that could be a.
Sorry, I'm, Mr. Kennedy, can I ask for clarification on what you, because I want to make sure I'm, I'm following?
Got it.
So the twenty-fourth, you wanted to push the, the, bring our three to five back to a week, to July seventh in my.
July first.
July first.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and so that would be our meeting to vote on our top three to five?
To, for each one of us to pick our top three.
Yeah, just push that back one week.
And then, and then what about, um, having, where would we put a workshop to get, get, to do our discussion?
Same, same thing, seventeenth, around the sixth, eighteen, seventeen.
Okay.
Yeah.
That wouldn't change.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that, all I was adding in was just pushing that back a week, everything else still fit checks.
Okay, I wasn't, wanted to make sure I was following.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman, you?
That, uh, thank you, that week of July first is, is usually a pretty empty week around here.
Yeah.
Uh.
I was gonna say that.
That's usually where a lot of people take, um, their vaca- summer vacation.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that, that is a kind of a tough week.
So I would say, I was, I, you beat me to it, I agree, I think most people take that week off, because Friday's already off. I, I, what I would suggest is, if you don't want to do it on the twenty-fourth, we can do it on the twenty-sixth, that at least gives another, still another two days um, for public comment, et cetera, people to reach out to us, gives us a couple of days, I know it's not a full week that you wanted, but I think if we did on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
But, but, but there was something on the twenty-sixth why we couldn't have our initial workshop, and that's what we did on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, we've got the, uh, there's the MTC commencement, must be summer commencement. Um, and spring graduation, perhaps, so I think that may, may be it.
That's what I have on my calendar.
I don't even have.
I, I, there wasn't, I'm pretty sure, um.
What time?
There was some kind of conference, too, potentially, with Superintendent Wyson.
Yeah, there was something at USF at the Ancient Center.
Correct, there was something that he was gone to, so that's why we moved it to the twenty-fourth. What time, what time is the MTC commencement, does it say a time? I don't see it on my calendar.
I've got ten A, I've got ten AM and.
Cause nothing usually.
Yeah, there's probably two.
I've got ten AM and then five PM.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, so we could do a workshop there around like noon.
Yeah, one, yeah.
Or one o'clock and then be done.
Immediately following.
Yeah, so we could do, we still could probably do one on the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
If, if that's what you want, if, if that's what we want to do to move it back the two days. Me personally, going through this before, um.
District's closed on Friday.
Yeah, district closes on Fridays, so, I mean, doing this before, you did have some people that waited to the very end to apply. But I don't think our top three waited, like, I think we knew our top three, like, they were, they, they, they were in, like, applying within the first week or so. Not saying, I mean, who knows, right? Anybody can apply whenever they want. But you are evaluating as you're going through from the second to the nineteenth. Um, I don't have a concern with me looking at applicants from the nineteenth afternoon, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Right.
But I could see your point of the public saying, hey, look, they're only given five days, but the ones who are going to be paying attention to this are going to be paying attention to it from the jump, from June second.
And right, and that, and right there, that's just the last thing I wanted to say, is that if we could create a way to capture public comment. That daily update you're talking about, end of the day update, if we could side by side have a have a public comment.
Agreed.
Option, you know, who's your, maybe a dropdown, who are you talking about, what's your short form?
I think what we, what we did last time was on the page of the superintendent search, you had the link that went to every. Went to everybody's, uh, uh, the list and it went to everybody's, um, uh, resumes and things like that. And then also on that page, it said to give comment, you clicked on. The link in it, I, Ms. Cox, I think, and now maybe you weren't here yet, Mr. Chapman, you can maybe help, I think when you, when you clicked on to give a comment. Was it then emailed to that superintendent search? Or or no, or or was it, was it another way, we did have the, we did have public being able to give us comment, but I forget how we, or we didn't, did we use Let's Talk?
We did, we, I think we just set up an email address that just said Superintendent Search at Mandy Schools.
Correct, and then, and then once that, you know, if if whoever has that email access, then pushes it. Once a day to us, like, hey, here's the email, so we will get, throughout the process, we will get updates. From the public hopefully, uh, maybe directly emailed directly to us, maybe called, et cetera, um, out and about, whatever, when you see people. Or I agree with you, on the superintendent page, the link to see all the the, uh, applicants, and also a link to say, send us your feedback.
Okay, excellent.
So so they will have time to do that, that's why I thought the twenty fourth wasn't gonna be that bad of a turnaround, because you're gonna have every day if they want to check. Every day if they want to.
And they did.
And they do, yeah.
Okay, um, I'll leave that up to you all, and then I just have a co- couple of comments on the qualification sheet, is this the right time or should I wait on that?
Uh, let's wait on that, let's do the timeline first.
Are we doing a timeline on the twenty fourth or top three?
I'm okay with doing it on the twenty fourth, but if if you, if there's changes, Mr. Tatum, what are you, what are your thoughts?
Twenty fourth, twenty sixth, twenty eighth, as long as it's an open day, I can look at them in five days, but there is something to be said for the public comment. Or allow the public enough time to look at it, but whatever you guys want to go with, I'm.
I would be against the twenty sixth simply because of the MTC graduations.
Okay.
And I have a personal appointment that day too.
I, I, I would just encourage everybody to.
Right.
Hopefully, I mean, I'm gonna start looking as soon as it opens on the Monday, right? Like, we're all gonna be starting, we're all gonna start looking and and you'll know, like, eh, thank you, but, or, oh, this is great.
Sure.
Right, like, you'll know, and so.
Just go to the twenty fourth.
I'm okay with the twenty fourth.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes you have to.
Let's leave it at that then, that's fine.
Okay, um, how about everything else the rest of the the way, obviously, you know, we can, if. If we decide, if we want to, we can call a special meeting or special workshop whenever we want, right, like, we feel like. We want to pump the brakes, you want to do whatever, like, I, you know, we can do that whenever you want.
Sure.
But I do agree with, uh, having those, that seventh through the, through the, let's say. Sixteenth of July, having the interviews, obviously, it's be public, they come in here, we interview. Do we want to do, uh, my question would be in the timeline as well, we do a public interview with everyone, do you want to do one on one interviews like we did last time? So last time, when they came in, um, you know, they had an interview, public interview, let's say at nine, nine o'clock, then we kind of flipped it. And we did personal interviews that kind of bounced around to all of us.
Right.
And it personal reviews, so is that something that you guys would want? Because that's not in here, the personal interview dates are not in here, but that would be during that two week window, is what my thought would be, depending on who they are, where they are.
Right.
I would say we could do interview, in individual ones on teams or on Zoom, I would be comfortable with that. You know, shoot, a lot of my work right now is, is, you know, people don't come in anymore, so I would be okay with a Zoom or Teams, you know, during that, that's something you guys want. In the, if individual interviews, like, we did like thirty minutes, like, we didn't go in there and like grill them for a day, we had like thirty minutes that they bounced around.
Right.
And so like two board members would have thirty minutes off, and then let's say the three candidates would be talking to three board members, right? And then we just kind of.
Rotated them, we just rotated them.
On a morning or afternoon.
Right.
So that's something, if that's something you guys want, we can work in the calendar during that timeframe of of.
Two weeks, two weeks.
The two week period, yeah, because. You're obviously, you may have some local, you may have some obviously out, and so. If we're, if we're, or we could do it the way we did it, which I think was like a two day cycle, right, like, it was like a two day, we flew them in, they came in. They stayed for two nights, the first day, they did the in- individual interviews, and then they also went out and toured the schools. The second day, they did the public interview in front of us, and when they weren't here, they were just by themselves, right, you're gonna go sightsee or whatever. So if that's the way you want to do that, we could do that, like, so, you know, the last, let's just hypothetically say we do it on like the. Tenth, eleventh, or fourteenth or fifteenth, whatever, whenever we schedule those, to then have that workshop for us on the seventeenth. To then decide, you know, the final person on that date, so that's stuff we can kind of talk about as we move forward. And how we want to do the personal interview, I think personally, the interview is good, I don't think it has to be here, you know, I think depending on what the candidate is, who it is. You know, if it's someone that's locally, that can drive an hour, like, they may not need the whole, like, day to sightsee and whatever, right, they know what we're doing.
Um, so I want to make sure we get it on the timeline, so if we close the interviews, are we still that week, the seventeenth? Are we, we're still on four day week, right?
Yeah, correct.
So then maybe we should close the interviews on the sixteenth, so on the seventeenth, we can do that workshop.
Sure, it can be like seventh through the sixteenth, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the seventeenth is when we're actually doing the the.
The workshop.
The workshop, yeah.
Okay.
So sometime in that seven to sixteen, we'll, and we will decide that, I think, once we get our applicant pulled in, we can. After the twenty fourth, we know on June twenty fourth, we picked the three to five, I think it'll probably be three. We can work with them on scheduling between the twenty fifth, twenty sixth, and twenty seventh, like those three days, we can start working scheduling the seventh to the sixteenth.
All right, and then the seventeenth workshop, and that that was it, I just want to make sure we included that.
That's July seventeenth?
July seventh through the sixteenth.
And then a workshop on July seventeenth?
Correct.
Okay, so July seventeenth is our second day of our leadership conference.
Okay.
So, but, but, you know.
I'll be honest with you.
We may not be needed for that.
I don't think you're needed.
Right.
I mean, I don't mean to be rude, I don't think you're needed.
I set you up for that.
Yeah, so, no, because I, because it's gonna be us discuss, you know what I mean, I don't, I don't, you know, last, last time, I think the board meetings. It, I don't think you guys were, I don't, I don't remember, I don't remember deputies. Even being here.
No, they were watching in, in their offices though.
I don't think they need to be, to be honest.
Okay, good, good, just an FYI then.
I mean, and that, that's just me saying, board, do we, I don't think we need.
No.
Anybody here, they can do their leadership.
This is Vogel, he here maybe help.
Yes, correct.
And this, and the staff there, that's all we need.
Yeah, but they don't, yeah, and they don't normally go to leadership conference.
That's what I'm saying, that the staff there, attorneys are here.
No, you do, but at least we'll have Dot here.
Right.
Yeah, so I don't think we need that, um, we're, I think we're okay with that.
Yeah.
But thank you for bringing that up.
Chad, go, one more request before we move on, and your your comments about board interviews made me think about this. With the approval of the board, could we set up an opportunity, perhaps in this room? For each candidate to spend a certain amount of time addressing questions from the public, in kind of a live Q and A format? Because I started thinking of this in that whatever. We do individually for board interviews, I would like for mine to be publicly available, like, I don't want to meet behind closed doors with anybody, is is my point. Any conversation I have with a candidate, I'd like to be. If not open to the public, available to the public while it's happening, or, yeah, while it's happening, not after the fact. Um, but, and which took me to the next thought, which is, can we make time, maybe it's over one day, make time for the candidates. To be publicly available to constituents, committee members.
Yeah, I think we could, I think we could potentially.
Nine days.
Um, when we're. When they're interviewing, whether it be individually, or, you know, they're gonna obviously have time, like, they're interviewing here with the whole board as a whole, and we're asking questions. Which we have from the FSBA, those questions that we ask and things like that, I think, I think that interview time took like maybe. Two out, like, we had like two hours maybe for each candidate, something like that.
Yeah, it was a.
So if you wanted to, you could say, like, hey, public, but they want to, but they also want to be here potentially watching it. Uh, I was gonna say, the other candidates could be somewhere else to that, we we did.
Part of that rotation.
We did have a Q and A, if you remember, we did have a, like a public come meet the candidate thing at. Uh, Central Cafe, where they, they were, they weren't standing at the podium getting fired questions at, but people were asking a question, they walked around, you know, as. They were kind of in corners, and people walked around to them to meet them, so we could potentially do something like that, if it was like a two day interview, we could do something like that at one of the night ones, you know what I mean?
Okay.
I I, I don't mind doing that. I I mean, I think we could probably do, like I said, at night, we, I think that's what we did.
It was.
They came in, they did some of the day stuff, and at night, we went over to Central Cafe, and then the next day was like the the board actual interviews.
Gotcha.
Now, as far as individual interviews, last time, we did not, they were not public, I don't even think, we didn't even keep minutes, I don't believe. I don't, I never even thought about it being public or not. I think that. Because some of the questions that, and we could, this is something we can talk about further, right, if we need to, um, I think some of the questions last time. When we had our board questions to them, remember we were all given like, um, like, I took. Technology and somebody else took education and somebody, and like, we picked like two or three questions to to ask them from those sections.
Right.
Am I remembering that correctly? So when it was an interview with the whole board, it wasn't necessarily like personal things to you. And we all asked these good questions.
Each candidate got exactly the same questions.
Correct.
Yeah.
When you did intervin- in individually, I think is when you got to where you're able to ask like, hey. I really. You know, I really believe in the early learning, you know, wha- what's your thoughts on early learning with children, blah, 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 it's like, those things is when we could ask like in personal. If you want to make them public, I mean, I don't know what your thought is, Mr. Dow, give it to the attorneys, I don't know what can or should or whatever.
So. My advice on that is, so it's a very public process. But the board hires the superintendent. The public have complete access to board members to give their opinion of what, I mean, they can urge you, you better ask them this question or whatever, they can say whatever they want to you. And don't think, and I also think if you want to do a meet the candidates event like you did before, it's up to you whether you think that was effective or not, but you certainly can do that, and that's probably a. More comfortable setting. But I, but I, I would hesitate to just open up. The public firing questions to candidates.
Agreed.
The, again, they're not hiring the person the board is, but they have access to the board, the public does, to let you know what their opinions are. But I I don't, I don't think I'd open it up as a direct, like, uh, question and answer on the fly, I I just don't think that would go well. Um, it might, but it may not, and. But but y'all, y'all did, you know, on the last, um, process. You did the, uh, public, uh, meet and greet event.
Right.
I can't remember if you did more than one, I think.
It was, it was just the one, and then the public was able to go on the website and give us their opinions on stuff.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, y'all know if you think that was effective, and if it was, you certainly can can do something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I also think we could do something like, if you're trying to get more public input on questions, I also think we could, as we get to the process, we could put out there to ask the public, like, send us questions, right? And then we can see those questions, and then maybe as we're deciding on those, the the questions and things like that, maybe we pick some of those to specifically ask. I would, I agree with that, I think I'd be opposed to having a room full of people that. Gonna be happy, sat, whatever, about what's going on, and pepper in somebody about stuff that they may not even know about the district, because they're not even here, right?
Well, and.
I don't know, you know what I mean?
I do, I I completely understand, um, the pushback, but the pushback that you're getting at, that's exactly what I'm after, I I would want to see the candidate on their feet. You know, how quick are they on their feet, because that's a big part of the day to day job of a superintendent, you know, quick decision making, dealing with multiple things coming at you at once.
And I do think that the meet and greet showed that, the one, we we, like, you could see. How they're, like, we, we all came sporadically, it's like, like, oh, first thirty minutes, first, it's like, you could see the interaction and how it's working, but we're never there together. So we could do that same, the same type of thing.
Okay, no, that's fine, I, it was just a suggestion and I can, I can stand.
As far as.
I I can, I can find a way to do that during my own interviews, is, but you know.
Sure, and as far as your own interview being public and shown, I don't know, I don't know how we would.
We can set it up in, we can set it up in two or three, we've done that before.
And just a camera.
We've got the, we've got the infrastructure up there. Yeah.
Yeah. Because, but but not everyone could, I, it may be hard to have everyone's done, because there's gonna be, remember, three, there's three finalists. You have three board members interviewing individually, and two, like, taking a break, so we'd have to have somewhere where they're interviewing three, I think. Like, last time, I think my seat, my my interview office was like the, next to Ms. Sellers' office, that that conference room. And and we were kind of sporadically put out wherever. I did, I don't know, I don't know what the the, from a technology standpoint, I don't know what they need actually, I don't know.
I want that, I want that private time.
Audit, audit, oh, well, that's, and that's fine, that's your preference for your, your time.
Right.
My, I think for my preference, we do audit committee meetings, C F O committees, th- those are audio recorded.
Yeah, you can do something like that, yeah.
But we could do that pretty simply, I think.
Well, if if we're gonna, sorry to interject, but if we're gonna do is it like, they're not here, if they're physically not here, and we're gonna do it on over teams or something, then you can always record it.
Right, exactly.
Correct.
Because they do have the option to do that as well.
Correct, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So is that a, that's gonna be a, a choice, not a.
Yeah, but I, yeah, I don't, I don't think we need a mandate from a board standpoint, they've got to be public.
Okay.
You know, I think if you want it to be, sure, you can figure something out if you want it to be, if they're teams, I think it's ea- it'd be super easy, I mean, that's obviously really easy.
Click record.
Right.
I would, I know it costs some money, but I would like in person private interviews, I I would just like to sit down.
Right.
Like we did last time, the two.
Yeah, and I know Zoom can work, it's less expensive, but I would like to meet one on one, sitting across the table with, it's just a different vibe than, than with Zoom.
Okay.
Right.
Just a different.
I think we could definitely, that that would be my absolute, like, let's try to get like a two day window like we did last time, bring them in, they stay hotel. Um, they're able to see some, some of the sites that they're not from here, go to some of the the, uh, we had like go see some of the schools and things like that while they were interviewing. So, yeah, perfect. Okay, so timeline's kind of set, we're good for that, I think once we pick the tw- after the twenty fourth, once we pick out those final three at that workshop and vote on it. We'll get going with the twenty, at the, on the twenty fifth, start, um, that that scheduling, that process between the seventh and sixteenth, and obviously, keep you guys. Keep everybody aware of when those dates are, I I guess I would say it's far enough out now. I haven't looked at my personal calendar, my business calendar, anything like that, but just make sure we all know, like, seventh and sixteenth, we're gonna have to be flexible, right, like, based on what.
Yeah.
These candidates can do and things like that, so. The sixteenth is the start of the leadership, correct?
Yes, it's start of the leadership, I just thought of something, so tell me that the the July seventeenth workshop is to interview. No, it's for you all to discuss.
To pick our finalists.
And to get your.
Pick our finalists.
Great.
Pick our finalists.
To pick the final person, the interviews will happen before that, um, from July seventh through the fifteenth, because the sixteenth, you guys are doing the leadership.
Okay.
So we would want, hopefully, um, you know, on June twenty fifth, twenty six, twenty seven, that that week, hopefully, we'll be able to get, I would love, perfect scenario. Like July ninth and tenth. Is when they would come in, their two day interview. And then the next week is when we decide, right, um, or maybe the fourteenth and fifteenth, um, but I know fourteenth is briefings.
Briefing day.
And fifteenth is, so, you know, I would, I would like to have it hopefully the ninth and tenth. Or even, I know we're off on the eleventh, like, the staff is, but we could potentially do stuff as a board if we wanted to, tenth, eleventh, but I would say the ninth and tenth. Okay, so I think timelines pretty much.
So you're saying the ninth and tenth would be the public meet and greet?
Yeah, that would be the days we bring them in, we do the single interview. Yeah, that would be the days we bring them in, we do the single interviews, one-on-one board interviews. Meet and greet would be that ninth on the ninth, you know, um, we'd go, we'd have to go back and look at our calendar before, I think, we did the end, the, the, um, board interviews the same day, the other candidates were going around looking at schools.
Right.
As we were interviewing someone for like three hours, I think, I want to say it took about three hours. And then an hour in between and another one, it was like a full day affair.
There was.
So when the two superintendents were not, the, those two ones that were not being interviewed, they were being shuffled around schools to check everything out. Um, and then they'd come in, they'd all had lunch together, the next person would interview, the person interviewed last, we'd go out and check out the schools and that sort of thing. We had, and I think, Mr. Chapman, you helped plan a lot of that.
He did.
So, um, I think we'll go back and just kind of emulate that. Not saying you have to plan it now, but we just, we could just go back and emulate that from that point. Okay, what about, so I think timeline, we're pretty much all in agreean- agreement. Um, gosh, what about, are we in agreement about uh, bringing in, using the, using Mr. Dye's firm?
Yeah.
Bring in everything.
I am.
Then Vogel in at the end. Are we all in agreement on that as well?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Uh, next it would be the posting. So you all see the posting, um, from last time, um, Ms. Cox sent that out to us this morning. Andrea sent that over. So that, it says, it's a Word document, one page. I think I'm good with that, as long as we probably just need to update, um, like, the amount of students we have now, employees we have.
Yep.
Obviously, the last sentence is, in the first paragraph, "School board is seeking new, to replace the current superintendent who is retiring." Um, that can be removed. But add, now we've got more schools, of course, another K eight, like, we need to just update that information. But I think from a qualification required, preferred, all that, I think we're good. Now, we did decide on this one, on the posting, the salary range here is two-twenty-five to three-hundred.
Oh, gosh.
And not one-ninety-five to two-seventy. I don't remember us changing that. I don't know if any of the board members, I mean, obviously, some of y'all weren't here, but I don't remember us having going from this qualifications page and having one-ninety-five, two-seventy, to now on the posting, it was two-twenty-five to three-hundred. I don't remember that.
No.
A- actually, I do kind of remember us talking about, I do actually remember us talking about changing that to higher. But I, but I'm okay, what, what have you guys want?
I.
You guys want two-twenty-five to three-hundred?
No.
Yeah.
I'm good with the salary range that we have.
This was one of my notes. I would just suggest we just make it realistic, at least what's realistic to me, and just make it two-twenty to two-sixty. The average superintendent pay right now is, in Florida, is, is roughly, the last number I saw on, uh, FSBA, and it was a couple of years old, was about two-forty.
Okay.
And for similar-sized districts to Manatee County, um, it, it was right around there too. You know, we're a medium-sized district in Florida.
Large, medium, yeah.
Yeah, so like even the lar- you know, the Miami Dades of the world, Hillsborough, Duval, I mean, even they're not, you know, I think one of them is touching three-hundred. But I think putting a range out there of three-hundred thousand is just unrealistic.
Right.
Yeah.
So I would suggest we just tighten it up, but.
What'd you say, two-twenty to two-sixty?
I'm suggesting two-twenty to two-sixty.
I'm o- I'm okay with that.
I have two other.
Anybody else thoughts on that? Two-twenty, two-sixty?
Sure.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Um, if I may, I just have two more changes for the qualifications notes we have here. Um, and Ms. Bray, I think you brought this up last week, um, experience in a school district with, I would suggest thirty thousand students or more. I mean, remember, we're at fifty-two or fifty-three thousand right now.
I put twenty, because I wasn't sure. I know we wanted it more than ten.
Yeah.
Yeah. I put twenty, so I'm good with thirty-two.
I would suggest thirty, because that's.
Thirty-two thousand, but thirty.
Thirty, yeah.
Two O.
Thirty thousand also.
As well.
So that's, you know, thirty thousand is, you know, still on the top end of a small district. Um, and then, in the, um, in the line after that on our qualification sheet, um, just a suggestion on verbiage, experience as a teacher, a school-based, add the word administrator, uh, and, not an or, but and, district-level administrator. Because, because the way it reads with the or, it, like, preferred qualifications, experience as a teacher could be enough.
Sure.
So my suggestion would be.
All of it.
All three of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm o- I'm okay with that too, so experience as a teacher.
School-based administrator.
Administrator and district-level administrator.
Correct.
So you gotta have all three levels.
Right.
I'm okay with that.
Um, did we also want to add in Florida experience preferred? Because what, we had discussed doing that, so I wanted to make sure if we want that, that we do put that in there.
Yep, yes.
Uh, yeah, I mean, me personally, yes, I think Florida is a completely different dynamic. So in preferred qualifications, we would want.
A fourth one.
Florida experience.
Yeah. As, yeah, as preferred, so, thank you.
So then, um, obviously, Ms. Cox, the, 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 all the qualifications, we're talking about changing the, we really don't need like the singular pa- like, that doesn't need to be posted anywhere, it's, because it's already in the, the, the search, you know what I mean? It's right there in the middle, so you don't need to like, do both of them, just do the search, edit the search one, you know what I mean? Okay, anything else with?
Yeah, so. I've, I'm trying to formulate my words. You know, I, I don't want to, I, I think we need to be careful, the assumption that there's just gonna be this plethora of candidates out there that have had experience in more than thirty thousand, uh, in districts with more than thirty thousand people, and, you know, when you start up in that number, you're gonna start limiting the pool that we can draw from. I'd hate to have a really good superintendent out there who's, who's done a great job in a district with fifteen thousand or eighteen thousand students and is, is, has, has been a good superintendent, is ready to move up, and then, well, gee, you know, you only, you've only done twenty-one thousand five hundred and nine students, and we're not gonna consider you, even though he has great recommendations and has done a great job. Uh, the other one is that it might be interesting if someone applied who was not necessarily, kind of came up through the ranks from the school system, you know, someone that, like even a, a prior board member or so- something that, someone like that who had some experience within the education system, but just hadn't been that, taken that standard track, you know, and.
Sure.
Had some outside managerial experience, some outside budgeting experience, and so I wouldn't want to limit it, because it sounds like with the qualifications we have right now, we're really limiting it to that, to that person who just kind of came up through the ranks, you know.
Great point. I'm glad you brought this, because I wasn't thinking like, so, to both of your points, I think we had it at ten thousand before, because of your exact point, right? Like, if we do put a number like thirty, there could be someone from a smaller county that's done a phenomenal job. And theoretically, I mean, it is preferred, it's not required.
Right.
So they could still apply, but they may be like, I'm not applying, because they want a thirty thousand, so I do agree with that. So I would have to be okay with even going back to ten, I'd be okay with that. The second point you bring up, I agree with that as well, because, um, you could potentially have deputy superintendents that, I'm, I'm looking directly at, at Ms. Sellers' name tag, right? Like CFO status, that, or even operations, that potentially were never teachers, administrators in the school, et cetera. So you could potentially obviously eliminate some very good candidates, that they may have been a deputy superintendent for ten years at a great district and, and have every knowledge of a lot, I mean, yeah, I agree.
Can, may I?
Something to think about.
Just to add, um, I did do a quick search. Google is wonderful when it works. Um, in, uh, twenty-twenty-two, um, the average si- uh, you, of, um, let's see, number of districts, that, they use sixty-nine districts for this average. Um, average number of students was about forty-six thousand.
Okay.
In Florida. So just, you know, just a kind of a, a look at that, so, um, you know, twenty, and I'm, I'm okay with either twenty or thirty. Would be reasonable for a Florida district, I think, so. But, um, I do appreciate the, you know, that it is preferred, but not necessarily required as well.
I don't even know why we would even put a number there. I mean, I, I just, I would like to see the candidates out there that, that want to apply, because like you said, if it's preferred, and I go on there and I go, well, there's already five people, you know, I, I'm running a district with seventeen thousand two hundred and nine students, and I've seen five people that have already applied in districts that are over, over thirty thousand, and so, I'm not even in the preferred pool, I'm not gonna bother. I mean, I, I, I don't.
Is that the kind of candidate you want, though? Somebody that's gonna be scared off by other candidates?
Well, yeah, because it's, it's, it's a process to go through. You have to
Sure.
put your application in. Like, if I were applying for a job, and I saw that there were five or six or seven or eight candidates that had, that met all the criteria and the preferred criteria directly, and then I'm gonna try and, I'm gonna spend, you know, six, seven, eight hours of my time filling out applications, I'm probably not gonna apply for that, especially if there are other ones available that, that, that meet the criteria that are more closely aligned with me. I mean, if there's a, if there's a superintendent out there that's run, that's, that has seven thousand students and is, or her school district and has an A school district, and it shows, you know, learning gains and increased graduation rates, and has, you know, the type of personality that we would want, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know why we would, wha- what does the preferred numbers mean anyway, that, like, I'm, I'm just not sure what that, what that means. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna discriminate between people because you had twenty-five and you had fourteen, and we're gonna discriminate between you. I'm, I'm not even sure why we want that number in there. I, I would just open it up to anybody who, who wants to apply, and there may be somebody that's never been a superintendent. And.
I mean, to be, to, on your point too, like, there could potentially be someone that is in the charter system of, you know, like, I'm just hypothetically saying Charter Schools USA, right? And they're high up in it, may want to get out of that, right? And they've managed schools, et cetera, but it's not a district. I don't know, but, but they, that doesn't mean they can't apply.
Okay.
Right, like.
Oh, sorry.
You know what I mean, and so.
Like, look at Tommy Gregory, for instance. I mean, I think he'll do an outstanding job as the president of SCF, and he has a lot of experience in the legislature, and he understands, uh, you know, the, but he didn't have a lot of education behind him, but they picked him.
Right.
And you may say, well, they picked him for political purposes. Well, on the other hand, he's, you know, he's, he's a very, he's, he, he's a very experienced leader, and he's very experienced in, with the legislature, and whatever that, for whatever reason, that board sought to have him and was the best pick for the community. And they have a board there, I mean, they weren't, I'm sure, I don't know, I imagine the governor probably called, and there were co- there were phone calls that went around. But the point is, is that if, 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 if criteria had been something like, uh, needed, previous presidential experience in a university with ten thousand people, or it came up through the, you know, was a T, was a professor, an assistant professor, or a dean, or vice chancellor, whatever, he, he would have been excluded from the process. And I just think a lot of these restrictions that we're putting on people about sizes and all times of experience that you have to have, uh, I don't know, you'd be surprised at the, the kind of people you might get to apply if you don't have those real strict criteria, but just my thoughts on it.
I think last time, we, with the ten thousand, like, we didn't get like crazy inappropriate people apply, you know what I mean? Like, so I'm okay with even keeping it at ten, um.
Can I, can I dialogue for a second with Mr. Tatum?
Hmm.
Um, if you drive through like, gosh, one of the rural counties?
Mm-hmm.
To Ms. Thornton's point, the average in our schools over sixty-seven counties, we're only, yeah, sixty-seven counties, how many?
Um, about forty-six.
Forty, forty-six thousand students.
Yeah.
But if you go to DeSoto County, they're not gonna have tens of thousands of students over there. This is, to my point in this, and I don't want to exclude anyone, because everything under the preferred is a preferred. That's up to us to decide. If there was a, a person that has, you know, legislative, leadership, doctrines and all of that, but was never a teacher, I would consider that. But this, I go back to, this is the top employee of the district. And we want somebody that knows that you're gonna be managing over thirty thousand, well, not directly, but responsible for thirty thousand plus students, six thousand plus employees, and all that goes with that. I don't know if somebody from a very small county like that would be able to adapt from a five-thousand student population to a fifty-some-thousand student population. That would be a big step. I, I can, example, my home county, I don't think anybody up there would be able to handle this at all. It's too big of a beast, and we know that. So I wouldn't necessarily consider somebody that's been in a small, little rural county, uh, to come and take over a district this big. And like Mr. Kennedy said, thirty thousand is at the very top end of a small district. Is that what you said, Mr. Kennedy?
Yep.
So we're right there at the edge of the small, and we go up to fifty-some thousand, so I don't think that number would deter me if I saw somebody like, uh, Tommy Gregory or anybody else, for that matter, to bring them on board as a finalist.
I wouldn't deter you, but will they apply? That's my.
I would think they would, uh, because, I mean, even, we don't have to have even that line preferred in there. We could just say, you know.
Desired qualification.
Desired, instead of preferred, desire.
And, and realize too, when we say a small school district, let's remember that Manatee County, at least in, there was a Wall Street Journal, Journal that go that came out about a month or so ago, Manatee County is the seventy-seventh largest school district in the country.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, do you want somebody from, coming from a very rural, rural, and I'm saying very rural
Right.
district into the top one-hundred school district in the country?
Probably not.
There, see, but.
Maybe. I mean, I, I just would want to, like, if you're running a district with twelve thousand kids and you've, you know, done a great job and moved it forward.
Very easy to run a district with just twelve thousand kids, and, and I can go back to my home county, because my neighbor was the principal. So, and the other neighbor on the other side was the principal of the other high schools, two high schools. And that's easy to manage.
Do we, do we, I think we obviously know where you, where you want to go. Do we want, I mean, board, I mean, are we, are we stuck on twenty? Do we want to go back down to ten? I think we had it at ten last time, I don't know why, I don't know what the reason would be. We, I mean, changing is fine, but I think leaving it is fine. We didn't get any applications that were like.
Less than ten.
Less than ten, to be honest. So I'm okay with just leaving it at ten, to be honest with you. But I know Mr. Kennedy said brought it to thirty, so, or we can leave it at twenty, so.
I'm happy to go to twenty. I mean, I'm honestly, I, I just keep falling back on, this is preferred, not required. And frankly, if somebody is scared off by other candidates in the field, that's a personality quirk that I think is gonna undermine his or her leadership if they were to get the job. So I mean, let's knock it down to twenty, and if that helps us move along, because I didn't intend for this to become a sticking point, but, um.
Twenty's fine, I mean, I'm fine with twenty.
Twenty. Okay.
Fair enough.
So twenty thousand for, or more students?
Which is what's on our page.
Right, which was already there.
And again, this is preferred, I mean, I, I don't know if we want to say preferred or desired, I don't know if that really changes anything language-wise.
I think preferred is better.
But I do agree that like, if there's someone that doesn't have teacher, like I. teacher, like I said, you could have someone a CFO, you could have somebody that's coming through, that's been doing a great job as a deputy superintendent for a decade, and they may never have had teacher, but they do have district level administrator, right? So. All right, any more thoughts on looking at that one-page ad? Like, any more thoughts on, you know, I think we're fine with resume, maximum of three letters, and professional recommendation, documents verifying current certification, I think we're all good with that. Obviously, we said two twenty to two sixty for the offer. Dates will change in there, and then, Mr. Di, you could just give us a email to where this can be sent to? You got to do it now.
And I'll, probably both of us need to talk to Dr. Vogel in more detail.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. But that, that way the posting at least can be ready to go for June second, Monday. The extra for additional information contact? I would just leave it blank for now, we'll decide once we talk to Vogel, like, does he want his information there or not? They could, you could potentially put
Mr. Di.
Mr. Di's information or your information, just so that they, if they had another question, they're actually looking, but, I mean, I'm assuming the email that Mr. Di gives, that administratively, if there's questions on there, they can, they'll forward that, you know, and say, hey,
We can do that.
See, there was, there was a question here, whatever, you know? All right, so we got our, 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 the actual posting done. So next thing I want to talk about is this, the advertisement venues. So that was sent as well from FSBA earlier, where we actually advertised. So obviously, the bottom one were the free ones. Obviously, and we, we should, we, we'd be able to use this as well. FSBA, social media, FSBA site, obviously our own, A A S A, State Association of School Superintendents, Broad Center, Council of Great City Schools, like, all those free ones, we'd be able to do, of course, and I would suggest we do. Of course, we'll have it on our own. My questions, though, for the other ones that cost, is I don't know if there's a minimum of thirty days in these. So I don't remember, Mr. Chapman, do you remember? Like, were some of these, like, Education Week's top school jobs, sixty days? I think that was the, the, the minimum you had to post it for.
Sounds familiar.
If I remember correctly. Same with thirty days with all these others. So because we're not doing thirty days, Board, I'm just asking, do we want to spend money
No.
on putting those out there?
No, I think.
I don't think there's a need to.
Can I make the argument for yes?
Yeah, go ahead.
Why we would, because the, these top five, Association of School Administrators, Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, Educational Week, Top School Jobs, Florida Association of School Administrators, and the National Alliance of Black School Educators. Like, even just doing it by nineteen hundred, twenty-six hundred, we're talking, if, even if we did all of them, which I'm not necessarily suggesting, but I do think we want to, like I said last week, I think we want to cast as wide a net as possible, even if in this kind of abbreviated or truncated schedule we have, I think spending twenty-five hundred bucks to cast a wide net, which reaches a diverse array of candidates, is worth twenty-five hundred bucks. I mean, considering the overall expense of the search itself, and then the importance of this job, and again, as I said last week, I think the, the wider the net it gives whomever the final pick is, that's what I'm looking for. It gives them, or it prevents, let me put it this way, it prevents any criticism of, well, they didn't really look far enough, or they didn't, you know, they didn't look wide enough. For only twenty-five hundred bucks, I think the cost benefit, the, the benefit far outweighs the cost. You know, especially just in the short term of, of the cost of a search. And, you know, it's not going to be up for as, actually, if you look at the thirty-day prices, that knocks, you know,
Sure.
It knocks almost a thousand bucks off, off of the total. So I just, I just don't think it can hurt, and to Mr. Tatum's point about, there might be, there might be a, there might be a gem out there that we would never find, who, you know, might, might see it in one of these, you know, kind of, you know, specialized journals or.
Publications.
Publications, thank you, that's the word I'm looking for.
Yeah.
Or E L, E L T H R over there, thanks for helping me out. So I, I just, you know, for that, for that, that amount of money, I think it's a very, very wise investment.
I do, I do think, just add them up real quick, it's like twenty-four hundred dollars for the lower ones, thirty days, six weeks, sixty and six, the middle two ones, but it's about twenty-four hundred bucks.
Exactly, yeah, about twenty-four, yeah.
I'm, I'm going to agree with Mr. Kennedy on this. I think with the money that we're saving by not using a big company, that we can, we can do this instead. I want to make sure that we are again, casting the wide net, and that the public can see that we are looking, we are making sure we are completely open to anyone from anywhere to apply, and that, you know, just that we're, we're being accountable that way.
I, I will say, I think some of these are redundant.
Yeah.
So, so as a compromise, I do agree with somewhat casting a net as wide as possible, although like last search, I, I'm, I'm still going to be privy to, to someone that knows the community and what we're dealing with here, but, but the, I would say, as a compromise, can we throw out Education Week top school jobs?
Yeah.
Yep.
That saves about a thousand bucks, and then you've got the American Association, so you got six hundred, two fifty, three eighty-five, three thirty, I mean, that, that brings it down to like fourteen hundred bucks, and that's nothing.
Yeah.
And I think Education Week top school jobs, I, I don't know what the difference between that one is in the American Association of School Administrators, plus National Affiliation of Superintendent Searches. I mean, I feel like some of these are just a little bit redundant. I mean, is that okay for you to take that one out?
Yes.
Okay? And, Mr. Tatum, you good with that?
Yep.
So, you know, do all of them except for the Education Week top school jobs?
Yep.
And then obviously, at the bottom, it says, you know, every state school board association, you know, fads, all that kind of stuff. Okay. That's all I have. Board members. Anything else that, Mr. Chapman, anything? Mr. Di, anything?
So, if, if you, the chair, and Mr. Chapman will hang for a few minutes afterwards, we're going to edit the agreement and sign it. That's it.
Sign it, okay.
Chad, I just have one edit for the qualities page.
Okay.
And it is on line number three. Just a suggested ad. What we have currently says ensures that E S E, including gifted, five oh four, and E L L students are met. I would just suggest a clause at the end of that quality that says, and services are compliant with federal law.
Okay.
E S E is such a tangled world of of statute and compliance, that I think it's important to, to note that in the qualities we're seeking. That's all I got.
I'm okay with that.
Yep. Absolutely. Laura, on the end of this, on the end of the sentence, just add, and services are compliant with federal law, or, and E S E services are compliant.
Could you say federal and state? Does state have different laws that we do?
Well, there's certainly Florida statutes relevant to it, but, but most of that department is federal, federal funds, but, but yeah, no, you're probably right, Ms. Bray, just to be safe.
You mean federally and state?
Federal and state laws.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, Board? Okay. All right. So.
Now it begins.
Good meeting, good stuff. Happy end of the, end of, end of school for our, our students. Right, last day of school, teachers still come back tomorrow for, for Record Day. And just want to say thank you to all of our staff, obviously here, but also at every school, to every level. We can't do this without you. We, we go up, we make decisions and do things like that, but the, the, where it's, where it's really done, and, and where we, we really change kids' lives is, is at the school level. So I want to thank all of our teachers, administrators, everybody at the school level, custodians, paras, everybody. Bus drivers, of course, this morning, it was early, it was early morning, it wasn't as hot as I thought it was going to be, but early morning, listen, nothing happens without the bus drivers getting them there, and I believe the best bus award goes to eleven oh five. She was great. Eleven oh five, we live. So.
One more thing, will Ms. Cox be sending out the calendar dates that we?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get all that out.
All right. And thank you to, to the two of you for all you've done through all this, too.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
All right, as Alice Cooper said, school's out for summer. We're returning.